Time is 4:30 PM. The Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of 25 January 2022 is called to order. I'd ask those in our council chamber this evening, if you would not sign in, if you would do so before you leave on the clipboard by the back door. And also everyone, if you have cell phones, please put them on my way. Roll call member Danielle.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Markoff.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster and Mayor Brian Fraser.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you, those in the council chambers, those joining us by Zoom this evening. And also remember, our council meetings are broadcast on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. I just, two or three announcements in the next couple of weeks, that tomorrow, Wednesday, 26th of January, 10 to 11 AM at the historic City Hall, is conversations with the mayor. Monday, March 31st, the Minnesota Legislature convenes at St. Paul. And then a two-day February 1st, 7 PM is precinct caucuses throughout the state of Minnesota. And our next city council meeting is slated for Tuesday, February 8th, 4:30 PM here at the City Hall. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand and hold the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone from citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number three is additions, deletions to the agenda. I have one addition. Item number 13 is Friendship Festival. Item number 13 is Friendship Festival. Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
They had to approve with the issue.
Sorry. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Item number four, approval of consent agenda, I will read those. Item number four A, approval of council minutes of January 11th, 2022. Four B, approval of accounts payable listing. Four C, one is liquor store report, which is in your packet. Four C two is utility report in the packet. And those are for the months of November and December. Item four D is Lake Country Service Cooperative Annual Membership Renewal. Item four E is Pelican Pick'em Club Incorporated Lofol Gambling Permit Application, April 19th, 2022 at the DMW. Item four F, certified property taxes. This is the property 414 North Broadway for mowing an amount of $130. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Item number five is Partnership for Health. And we have Patrick Hollister with us this evening. And there was a handout in your packet, it was labeled item number five. And Patrick can address this.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Thank you for giving me some time on your agenda this evening. I'd like to acknowledge that with me is Ellie Litzinger, Minnesota Green Corps member, serving in Pelican Rapids. So Ellie and I and Emily Reno attended the city's comprehensive plan workshop here at City Hall on, back on December 2nd. And you might recall that your consultant had display boards around this room, listing various goals and ideas that have emerged from the concept plan process thus far. I was very impressed with the evening. I thought it was very well laid out, and I was impressed with the ambition that was displayed amongst all those goals and policies. Several of them caught my attention, and I wrote some notes on, on the boards. And I also talked to Don and the mayor about it. And I said, you know, Partnership for Health might have some funding available to help advance some of these concepts. And I said, we won't know until January. Well, it's January, and we're happy to report that we do indeed have some funding for the city of Pelican Rapids to help further pursue some of the goals, or further develop some of the goals that have been enumerated thus far in your new comprehensive plan. So what we are suggesting here is that Partnership for Health provide funding to the city of Pelican Rapids in the amount of $10,000 for the purpose of hiring a consultant of the city's own choosing to develop what I'm calling a trail plan. And the trail plan would cover five topics. All of these come directly from your comprehensive plan process. Item one would, or topic one would be future trail connections within the city of Pelican Rapids. Number two, future trail connections between Pelican Rapids and neighboring communities or destinations. Topic three, a concept plan for future amenities in the new trailhead for the Pelican Rapids to perm trail. Topic four would be a boardwalk or riverwalk along the Pelican River. And topic five would be improved canoe and kayak, kayak access to and along the Pelican River within Pelican Rapids. So a couple more notes about this. As I mentioned a moment ago, the, the city of Pelican Rapids would hire your own consultant of your own choosing to write the trail plan. The consultant would work under the guidance of an advisory committee. Who is on that committee is up to the city, although we are requiring that the, the committee have at a minimum, representation from Mindot, Otter Tail County, and Partnership for Health, specifically myself. So you need to put me on the committee. And then the committee would meet as determined, as determined necessary by the city and the consultant. It would be up to the city to schedule and host the committee meetings. We would also require that there be at least one public input meeting in relation to the trail plan, although there could be more if the city and the consultant determine a need to have more than one. All work on the trail plan must be completed by September 30th of this year. And we, Partnership for Health, will reimburse the city of Pelican Rapids for payments the city has made to the consultant, for a total not to exceed $10,000. The final invoice from the city to Partnership for Health will be due 15 days from completion of the trail plan. We are not requiring any matching financial contribution from the city of Pelican Rapids. However, we encourage the city to consider enhancing our contribution with additional city revenue to increase payment to the consultant if said increase could, could result in a more detailed plan, but that's entirely up to you. We are asking for some minor in-kind contributions to the process, which include free use of Pelican Rapids City Hall for the advisory committee meetings. Those advisory committee meetings could also be on Zoom. Whether you want to do them entirely online, entirely in person, or a hybrid of both is up to you, up to the city and the consultant. Number two here, if the public meetings take place in a facility that charges a fee, and I don't know whether the, the school facilities charge a fee or not, or whether local churches charge a fee or not, but if the public meeting occurred in a facility that charges a fee, we, we ask the city to please cover that expense. And then number three, we're hoping that at this one or more public input meetings, we would have participation by the mayor, city council, and relevant city staff. We are suggesting that the one or more public input meetings be publicized in advance as a council workshop or a council work session in order to comply with the open meeting requirements, so that it would be permissible for a quorum of you to attend the meeting. Also attached to this agenda item is a three-page draft of an agreement to be executed by Partnership for Health and the city of Pelican Rapids. And that's basically it, in a nutshell. I'm open to any questions you might have.
Questions for Patrick?
How does this tie into our safe house for schools thing that we're trying to work with?
The safe house for schools, if we get that, just deals with getting children to the school facilities. This is really more comprehensive. And I could say that this really doesn't necessarily talk about trails or, or pedestrian infrastructure to the schools specifically. There might be some overlap. In fact, with the type of the safe house for schools studying when that starts later this year, if we get that funding, this would potentially be done and could be used as a resource as they put that school plan together.
Do we need to have, have a more precise or a completed plan by Mindot for their, the work that they're going to do for the trails and stuff, for the sidewalks?
I don't think so. I think if anything, the discussions being had with this committee for this plan, through those discussions, I think some of the same areas would be discussed, and it would ultimately maybe kind of fall into this to make sure that there isn't conflict, you know, that type of thing.
Patrick, will this be a standalone document then, or is it all approved?
Yes. And the city's at liberty to either adopt it or not. We are not requiring that you adopt it in, in exchange for our funding. I hope that you would. And just one other comment. For example, item three there, when it says a concept plan for future amenities in the new trailhead for the Pelican Rapids to perm trail, I know that your park board has already put some thought into what they'd like to see at the trailhead. It's certainly not our intent with this trail plan to compete with that. We want to support that. So one thing that the consultant could do is meet with the park board and get input from them as to where they're at with planning for the trailhead. And whatever is the latest and greatest thinking by the park board as to what should be in the trailhead can be incorporated into the trail plan.
I guess I don't see any downside in adopting this. The cost recovered, he's only seeing $10 million.
Correct. And we're not requiring any matching, any financial match on your part.
You know, one of the things that Patrick mentioned was that those five points on the memorandum deal with the things that are being put into the comprehensive plan. So if there are mentions of these things in the comprehensive plan, this may help fully develop how we might accomplish some of those things in the comprehensive plan.
Questions, council? The public input meetings would actually be public input meetings, or are they the public information meetings, much like the Mindot meetings?
It is up to the city and the consultant to determine the format and the, and the structure of the public input meetings, or open houses, or whatever you want to call them. I, you know, so as it says in here, you know, we're only requiring you to have one. You could have more than one, if you want more than one. And when you schedule that, the work has to be completed by September 30th, 2022. But when you schedule that public input meeting, is up to you. I would suggest that you do it somewhere probably halfway to two-thirds into the process, so that we do have something substantive to show the public when we call them in, whether it's here, or at the school, or wherever it is. If you have more than one public meeting, then maybe you want to have one kind of, one third into it, and one sort of two-thirds into it, so that at the, you know, early on in the process, you can get input from people. And then when, when those concepts are more developed, but before we're finally done, you have one final check with the public and make sure that the public considers us to be on the right track. So how many, how many public input meetings you have are up to you, and how they're structured, what the format is, is also up to you.
Any other questions for Patrick?
What would the council like to do?
I need that we go forward with the agreement between Partnership for Health and the city of Pelican Rapids during adopting the trail plan.
Motion second? Discussion? Discussion? Discussion?
Where, I'm just thinking ahead here, but for this consultant, where are we going to go for that?
Are there any consultants that do this type of thing?
There's a number in the area. Some of them are based in Fargo-Moorhead. Some of them are based in the Twin Cities. There's maybe a couple in the Detroit Lakes area. So you've got quite a, quite a, you know, a selection that are, that are relatively close by.
What we would do is basically just reach out to probably a couple of them. You know, Patrick and I talked a little bit before the meeting too. Obviously Apex Engineering is involved in a lot of our infrastructure. But having said that, SRF is the one that did the whole complete streets concept for the city that summer in 2019. So SRF F also worked on the county firm to Maplewood, the Pelican Trail. That was all SRF. So they're familiar with a lot of the trail plans and systems in, in our area now. So they would potentially be a consideration, but like I say.
Would Sourceville have some?
I could, I could reach out to Jay and see if they have experience doing this type of thing. The one thing is, you know, obviously this would be our, our guide, these two documents would be our guide to those consultants to put together some type of proposal, and then just have them submit to the city and the city council to look at it and choose when probably the best way to do it.
Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close the same, motion carried.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Item number six, new pool bid discussion. There is a copy of an email that was put on your, in front of you here a few minutes ago before the meeting started regarding an email between Scott, who was with us this evening, some design intent architects sent to John. And as you recall, we accepted the pool bids from Hammers Construction. And it can only held for, I don't know about this, X number of days. Otherwise, we can either continue to accept that bid and pay the increased prices at the end of the project, or go to rebidding if I understand this.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me. I'd like to read this email from Hammers. Well, basic, maybe I should go back just a little bit. About the middle of January, Don had called and had mentioned to me that the state had pushed back the, the award timing for the, the grant that you guys applied for. What was, that was called the?
Targeted Community Capital.
Yeah, Targeted Community Capital Grant. Yep. Until the middle of March. Is that correct? Yeah. So then, what I had done at that time is I had, and I haven't shared this with you guys, but I did share it with Hammers, since they are the apparent low bidder, and you technically haven't accepted their bid yet. And I don't think you want to quite yet, because once you do that, then I think you got to enter into a contract with them. But I, I took the, the MOU that we had created beforehand, and I added a chapter, well, a paragraph number seven, which was a term extension, asking Hammers to extend their, the MOU until March 31st, 2022. And then I got an email back from Joe Hammers, the president of the, of the company, and he said, thanks Scott, we cannot sign this at this time. Materials are very volatile and changing weekly, and just too many unknowns to see out that far, meaning the middle of March. What I'd propose is that we do our, our best to hold the price, however inevitably there will be some material costs increases in which we'd show you, you, the documentation and itemize each cost increase with justification. Lumber has gone up 40% in the past 40 days. Rigid foam board just jumped 10% this week. Who knows what next week will bring. Concrete is a huge unknown right now. We can't even get a firm price on concrete right now. I did speak with Joe this morning. He had told me that concrete had jumped $30 a yard as of last week, so that went up. Steel is really high right now. He thinks things will, you know, calm down, but right now he really just can't commit to anything that far out. So at that point in time, right now, we're, we're looking at our MOU expiring at the, at midnight on January 31st. And I guess there's a couple of options that I think you guys could do. You could just do nothing, let it expire, and don't, I guess, I'm not saying reject the bids, I'm saying just don't take any action on the bids, so therefore they're in limbo. And we can wait and see what happens on the middle of March to see if a grant is awarded to you folks. And at that point in time, let's, if it is granted and you want to move forward with Hammers, we can certainly give Joe a call and say, okay, Joe, the grant came through. Give us a new estimate, what's it going to cost, you know, and improve it to a show it to us on paper. At that point, we'd have a new number for us, or they'd have a new number for us. And then at that point, we could accept the new number and go from there. Or you could do nothing and reject all the bids and rebid again later on down the road when you know if you've got both. Because you might get, you might get the grant and you might get the money from the state also, I believe.
We know that projects in Pelican are on the governor's list.
Yeah.
Now, but how they interact in getting the state bonding money, how it affects the targeted community grant, nobody knows.
Nobody knows, yeah.
So can we, if we did award both of them, are we going to be able to use both of them? Or how does that work? We don't, we don't have any idea right now.
Okay.
The other thing that, you know, right now, as I understand it, under the subcontract numbers, if, if, if the council awards the bid to Hammers, you know, we understand that they start basically ordering stuff and everything, so.
Right.
You know, awarding it is probably not a good idea, but same token, and awarding it is holding them subs to those numbers.
Right.
If we do nothing and we let the MOU expire, in a sense, it's open for new numbers by everybody anyway, because, as I, as I think about it, because the MOU will be null and void, the bids, because they're beyond the 30 days, will be null and void. So they basically can, you know, do whatever they want to do. I guess the one thing is, you know, because they'll all be able to change their numbers.
Right.
But the one thing I guess that you alluded to is, once we know we got the grant, we can ask Hammers for new numbers from everybody. And if we don't like them numbers, then rebid.
Right. Exactly. Or if you want to hold them to their numbers right now, plus whatever we hadn't, I can't remember, everything's in the MOU, the, you know, there's some, there's some increases in the MOU, like you're saying, Don. But then you're kind of going into a blind, because you might accept their bid, and then you'll have to fill out, you know, you have to sign the contracts and everything like that. But you might not get either the grant, or the bonding might not go through. So then you would be, you know, kind of between a rock and a hard spot, really. So.
Because we don't know. If we're going to be one of these, I don't know how we can possibly award.
Yeah.
So we're kind of, we know that that's probably not the move we want to make, but.
Right.
So it's really, yeah, let it expire and, and address it when we find out. If we get that, the first grant, not the bonding one, but if we get the 1.5 from the targeted community grant, if we know we got that, then we can.
Yeah.
Ask for new numbers.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding, if we let it expire, and all the bids are in limbo, all the bids.
Mm-hmm.
To allow, we can't just allow Hammers to, we won't get, we won't to resubmit their numbers. We basically have to re, have to let all of the bidding companies go in, and to make it.
Well, Hammers is still the apparent low bidder, so they would get first crack at it, if you will.
We would be obligated to reach out to any of the other bidders.
Right. I, I don't think you would. If you're going to do that, then you have to rebid, basically.
My question.
Yeah.
If we have awarded the bid.
You haven't rejected any bids yet, and you haven't accepted any. If you reject them, yeah, then you'll have to rebid. But if you just table it and let it stand the way it is, in other words, wait till next month, then, and say you, you get the grant, or maybe it's two months from now, or whatever, you just, just keep tabling it for a couple of months. Quite frankly, the three people who are not the apparent low bidders have already moved on. They're probably not thinking about you guys anymore at all. So that doesn't mean they wouldn't like to rebid it, but it's probably not in your best interest to rebid it, in my opinion. So.
I'm just, I mean, it just seems like it'd be kind of, I'd kind of janky to not award a bid and not hold everything in limbo, and then just allow one company to adjust their bid.
I don't agree with that, simply because as it stands today, if we would have been a little forward and get our grant, we would have already got your hammer.
Yeah, I think it goes back to the intent.
Exactly.
I think the council's intent would be to award the low bidder, which is Hammers. And the fact that you're not rejecting all of them at this point, still, your intent was Hammers.
Yeah.
And it's, but it's.
I agree. I just want to have this come down and if it's all.
Oh, sure. Totally understand.
But you never know.
Yep.
Some third company comes in and say, well, wait a minute, now we have to put everything. We need a judge involved in injunction and a hold.
Yeah.
Scott, do we have to take action to table this, or just do nothing?
That's a good question. I'm not sure, my pay grade's high enough for that, so.
I mean, it's on Hammers, not Hammers. You know, they didn't have just to hold off for a couple of months.
Does it make sense maybe to table this until we know if we're going to get funded to the targeted grant?
I would say postpone it rather than postpone.
Yeah.
Postpone pending.
Postpone awarded until pending the outcome of the grant.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, is that a motion?
Until.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carried. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Item number seven is 2022 local order review and equalization, which will be on April 7th, 2022 at 8 PM. Danielle, do you want to speak to that?
So, this year, on April 7th at 8 PM, we made sure, I have to have a forum of you, so, and I need to have either Kurt or Brent here, because they are the ones that learned all the good stuff, including your calendar.
There it is. There it is. Anybody know that the little network?
Two pages.
Seven paper.
Two in a week.
Thursday.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday, yeah.
Yeah.
Good. So I would love to count you all with that paper.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Item number eight, park board minutes are in your packet. There's a FYI. Any questions on those? Item number nine is Pelican Rapids Pool Committee Minutes, which are in your packet. Any question on those? And let's go to item number 13, Friendship Festival. The Friendship Festival is slated this year.
Any question on those? And let's go to item number 13, Friendship Festival. The Friendship Festival is slated this year, Saturday, June 18th, and is previous time to Calumet Sharon Park. And the committee is asking to reserve all the park sites, camping sites, which are 1 through 11, this evening of June 17th, which we've done previously. But we need council approval of that.
I move to approve the reservation of all sites on June 17th for the Friendship Festival.
Motion second? Discussion? Assuming there haven't been any, you're using. Discussion? Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Motion carried. Item number 10, administrator.
Since the last meeting, basically, I have been away from vacation. And since I got back yesterday, then we're going to have to do a report, and get that done next Monday. Not a lot of work to do there.
Any questions for Don? Thank you. Item number 11, mayor report. I just have three items to report. January 12th, Don Phim from the Welcome Place and I were invited to speak at the 7:00 AM Koala Club Meeting in Fergus Falls, and the topic was what's going on in Pelican Rapids. We just kept abreast of what's happening from her perspective of the Welcome Place, and I was telling you about the festivities and projects we have going on here in Pelican Rapids this summer, or this year. January 13th, attended the 2024 Complete Streets Project Meeting, invited Zoom here at City Hall. And then I visited with a few Chamber of Commerce members regarding the Red River Valley Owen Garden Show the last weekend of February, and trying to recruit some people to work at that, and that is doing one real well at this point. And that is all I have. Any questions? You seen that one? It is going on. Okay, seeing no other meeting on this agenda, is there a motion to approve? Second. Motion second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Hold the same.
Keep it up, guys. Keep it up. I know, it's weird that I need to go back to work now for another half hour. Yeah.